Three oh one. Boarding, boarding Apple, it is three oh one. I'll call the order this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. For, sorry, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. As the usual. Public safety, I mean, public service reminder, these meetings are always open to the public. Their meetings of the Board of Selectmen to conduct the ongoing business of the Board. If you'd like to offer comment, there's an opportunity on the agenda to do so. Newly added, when commenting, please state your name and title if applicable. If the meeting is interrupted due to disconnection or weather, which. I doubt, we will do our best to resume no less than thirty minutes from the time of the interruption. Alrighty, so firstly, we have. Public comment on the agenda. And I will. Scanning the room. For any. Electronic hands that might be up. You don't see any. Alrighty, we'll keep moving. Moving on to our sole topic, the twenty-three, twenty-four operating budget. So at our last meeting, we invited a number of the grantees to attend this meeting to. Have a little bit of a deeper discussion about their grant requests. And as long as. Do I see Tammy on the call yet?
Yes, I'm here.
Fantastic. I'm going to. Put you in a spotlight, let me find your, what's your username on the call?
Oh, I'm at my office, so. It may be Shalom.
Got it. Alrighty, there you are. Hi.
Hi.
So. We see that your request was for roughly nineteen percent increase. And if you can just. Give us a little bit of background for the increase in your request, that would be great.
Sure, our previous, our previous grants were thirty-seven thousand dollars. Last, the last two years, our expense for. The mowing and the trimming of the six cemeteries in Kent was forty-four thousand. We applied through the town for an ARPA grant. Last year. And that was for seven thousand. And we received it, so that covered that previous year's forty-four thousand dollars. This year, our, our cost again was forty-four thousand dollars. And so. That's, that's what initiated the, the change in our grant request. That is what it costs to mow and trim the cemeteries. We usually, we usually pick up the difference. But the seven thousand was a lot for us to handle. And, and the increase was due to COVID. Our contractor wasn't able to. Keep his staff on board because of illness and how hard it was to. Hire additional help, he ended up having to subcontract. Some of the work out, and of course, that was a bit more expensive. And we anticipate this coming year's mowing season will be at the forty-four thousand dollar mark again. Hopefully, it's not more than that, but they're. Doing a very good job, and of course, Bill used to go into the cemeteries. And do some, you know, volunteer work and. In cleaning up and whatnot, but if you've seen him around town, you know, that's not a possibility any longer. So we're, so that's where the addition came from. That's what it's cost the last two years. It's probably what it's going to cost this coming year. And. That's the number that, that we put in. We still raise, we do our fundraising every year. And that's enough to do some of the special projects. That we try to do every year. We're again looking this year at some stone repair. We have a new company that we're going to be talking to. To see what their pricing is. And luckily. The care has been really good, the cemeteries have looked really good, whether it's dry or raining and. We haven't had any complaints. So.
And just okay. Thanks, Tammy, and just so that everybody has sort of a full scope. The cemeteries that you care for. If you can just sort of.
Sure.
There's a number of them around.
Yes, there's six of them. They're owned by the town of Kent. We are a volunteer organization that was established after World War One. Because the town was not able to maintain the cemeteries. They didn't have the finances nor the manpower to do it. So the association was founded. At that point. And sort of took over the oversight of the six cemeteries. And it never went away. We're still overseeing the six cemeteries, so we can start in the south. We start with Bull's Bridge Cemetery. We come up into town and we have Saint Andrew Cemetery. Congregational Cemetery. We go further up and we have Flanders Cemetery. We go further up. North on Route Seven to Good Hill Cemetery. And then we come back and we go up to the stop, top of Skiff Mountain, and we have Skiff Mountain Cemetery. And those six cemeteries.
Think there may be a, a fair amount of people that don't know that it's that many.
You know.
Once, you know, you get out of the center of town.
Yeah, we've been at this for so long. That we keep reminding people that there are six cemeteries. On occasion, I have gone to the town meetings and reminded everyone that there's six cemeteries. Yeah, we, we have a cemetery association with about a hundred members. Spread all over the world, actually.
Wow.
Because we, you know, there are families that have owned graves here since the seventeen hundreds. And then, of course, everyone who buys a new grave. You know, we encourage to become a member and they, they always do. We send out an annual. Letter saying what the cemeteries, the association has done during the year. We have an annual meeting every year in April. And we're hoping to go forward, we are aging out ourselves. We're trying to find some younger people to come in, which isn't always easy.
Understandable.
So that's. That's where we're at.
Great.
But if the cemeteries are not kept up to snuff. We all hear about it.
Rufus Glenn, any questions for Tammy?
Just to thank you, Tammy, thank you for describing all of this. And, and I'm looking back at previous budgets and prior to this year. You know, grants were thirty-seven thousand for a couple of years for, for. Twenty twenty-one, so, so it didn't move very much. You see thirty-six thousand in nineteen and twenty, so this, this is the biggest, you know, jump in a while.
It is, it is, we actually have been covering the, the difference. And we usually put in anywhere from a thousand to four thousand. Dollars, it's what's, it's COVID. That created. And we're, and our group is just not out of it yet. And the, and you know. They run on gasoline, you know, those big machines, and I mean, you know that from. You know, the town crew and. All of that, so we don't foresee this year. Costs going down at all.
Amy, do you generally have a cycle where you, every certain number of year, how long the contract is with the?
We're on a year-to-year basis, we used, we used to do, you know, a two or three or four-year basis. But the company that's been maintaining the mowing, the trimming. They've been with us now for. Over twenty years. And they're incredible. They, they've had their babies and their babies are now working in the cemeteries. And they care.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's, I, it's gotta be a pretty detail-oriented process to.
It is, it's, it's not, it's not an easy job. To mow and trim and every time they see something that's not quite right, you know, they're. They're right to the harshest to let us know and. They're, they're, they're a really good group.
Great, thanks. Rufus, any questions?
Questions, thank you, Tammy.
No, you're welcome.
I've, I've, I've got one more, if that's okay. You, you mentioned a few fundraisers that you do for special projects. May I ask roughly, like, like, how much do you raise and, and?
Well, it's pretty consistent. We send out our annual letter every year, ask dues are, by the way, dues are twenty dollars a year. So we, anyone can become a member. Of the association, and of course, most people. Send in more than their twenty dollars. So the annual letter usually generates three thousand dollars, that's pretty standard.
And does that letter go to your members?
Yes, it goes to the members, yeah. On occasion, when we've had. A really large. A, a larger-than-usual project that we want to do, like when we rebuilt the pillars. At the front of Skiff Mountain Cemetery. We, we, you know, contacted the people that actually own graves in Skiff Mountain and asked for. You know, additional funds because they have a particular interest. When we redid the fencing. All around Saint Andrew Cemetery and then restored the gates. We did a special fundraiser. Specifically targeted at the families in Saint Andrews. And, you know, we've, we've managed to do those big projects and. Go forward with them. Stone repair is ongoing and it will never end. We try to spend about five thousand dollars a year. On stone repair, some years were successful with that, some years were not. And then we have others, you know, when we have a storm, the trees come down. And off we go. To do cleanup and. Whatever, the, the town funds are strictly for mowing and trimming. That's what that hell is. Everything else, we kind of cover on our own.
Great, thank you, thank you, very, very clear.
Thanks, Tammy, we appreciate your time.
Oh, you're very welcome.
For sure. So I'm going to shuffle the deck chairs again and next.
May I leave?
Yes, unless you'd like to stay, it's up to you.
That's alright.
Completely up to you.
Alright, bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
I was looking for, I think it was Lynn Davies. From. Literacy Volunteers. Oh, there she is.
Just try. I left, left arm in a bit of a sink, so there am, that's me.
Oh, I put Kelly.
Volunteers.
Hang on one sec. When someone hangs up, the names all shuffle.
Yeah, that's right, it's like the Hollywood, the Hollywood Square boxes.
Oh, where did you go?
I'm, I see myself up at the top left.
There we go, I found you. Yeah, I don't have the, I have a different view.
Speaker view, there I am.
Fantastic. Hi Lynn, it's nice to meet you. And so we have that. Your increased request was fifty percent increase or another five hundred dollars, so. I read, I was reading the, the letter and. To be perfectly honest, I had not had a lot of visibility on the work that you do. But it was really interesting reading a lot of connection to our town. And services that you are providing, so, but I'm gonna hand you off the floor.
Well, as you said that, this is our literacy volunteers on the green. We have an office in the parish hall of Saint John's Church in New Milford. But we service adult learners from Northern Fairfield County, which is basically Brookfield and Danbury, all the way up to. Warren Kent Cornwall Bridge, you know, whatever, we have. Just gone through our database and kind of clean house, so we have seventy-five active tutors and a hundred and fifty students. We have a board of ten or eleven people, we just have a new board member. And half of our board members are from Kent, it's just absolutely wonderful. We have five very active tutors. At Kent, who meet in various places, and we thank Sarah Marshall in the library because they love being there. I could pull all our favorite pictures that we use for marketing. Sarah or somebody else has taken in that library, and there's like. The beautiful books in the background and the light is kind of coming in through the window and I run around taking pictures constantly of tutors and students. And I can never get it to look like the Kent Library, so. Anyway, so it's, it's a wonderful organization and there, we really thank the library. So. As of now, we have five to six students that actually live in Kent. So when I say students, those are adult learners. And adult learners that are immigrants that are English language learners. We've always tried to have a little bit more of a presence in Kent. Because our board members and our donors are so supportive from that area. And I've reached out to the Kent Center School, to Social Services, to so many other organizations there, and it's been hard to get people. Our, our tutors are devoted to us from Kent, as are our board members, they put up flyers. But the extra five hundred dollars that I would request from Kent. I think really would be me going out to businesses, to communities, to really. Activate the fact of who we are and what we do. So if ninety percent of our hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five students are English language learners, is, as you know, literacy is so much more than ESL or ELL. It really is about basic skills, it's about reading and writing. And those are the adults that all adult ed centers and all literacy volunteers, there's fourteen literacy volunteer groups in Connecticut. And seventy-two state mandated programs. And we've all struggled over time to attract that adult who. Struggles with basic reading, improving a reading language, and the statistics from pro-literacy that we're part of. There's forty-three million adults in the United States that can't read and write beyond a third grade level. So when we look at Kent. We'd like to get away, and this is a strategic plan for two thousand twenty-three for LBG in all our communities. But we'd really like to reach out to businesses. The Kent Center School again, Social Services, and really find that adult who is struggling. Who perhaps is underemployed because of literacy skills and attract them. So that means more marketing materials and it means my time kind of coming out, so. I think we've been very, very successful, we've got four employees and slash owners from the Villager. That we love and they are our students too, but we would really like to broaden our base. And I think we could do a much better job. The fact that you didn't really know of who we were, and we've got all those. Board members in Kent who sing our praises speaks to the fact that we need to be more visible. We have the marketing materials at various organizations in Kent, but it's just not getting through. So I would like the time and the opportunity to come to speak to groups.
Great.
We are very, we are very thankful in the past for how generous you have, you have been.
Fantastic.
I, I hope that you saw in the letter, so one of our wonderful success stories and Sarah. Marshall will know this, that one of her board members, Sharon Norton. Sharon is the most, how could I say, whatever Sharon does, she does with two thousand percent enthusiasm. So you give her one student and she kind of runs with that, now she's got this charming young. Man, of course, this is all confidential, here in a group, a Mexican-American and. Working in Kent and has a wonderful background in accounting, so we're. Doing whatever we can to service his employment needs. But he became a voter for the first time in Kent. And that was a wonderful picture that posted and that was due to, to Sharon's effort, so. I guess the extra five hundred dollars would be for my time for marketing, but it's also to look at that adult who's. Who's not an English language learner, who's a native foreign speaker who is underemployed because of basic skills. Reading, math, writing, whatever.
Yeah, and reading, that was one of the, the things that I highlighted in your letter was about. That first-time voter, and it sort of made me think that you're doing way more beyond. Just teaching people how to read.
Oh, oh, yeah.
It's so much more of a holistic.
Right.
Approach.
Right.
Thing.
And we also look at families and Sue, Hank McQuinney is our president now, and Sue's been very involved with the library and the Kent Center School, it's retired teacher. And we've spoken to. The principal of that school, her name's just escaped me right now, I'm sorry, but.
Shalma.
That's right, so we look at what are the opportunities for families? We've reached out many times, she has sent us family names, but then they have not followed through. We were very successful at the Gun Library in Washington over the summer. June, July, August, September, we did a bilingual story, toddler story time. Reading books in Spanish and in English and getting Spanish-speaking families to get library cards, things like that, so. Those are the areas that we'd love to talk to Sarah and the library about. Is having more of a presence in Kent.
Great. Rufus. Glenn, any? Questions?
No questions. I think it's a great. Organization, thank you.
And if you'd ever like to tutor or improve any of your skills, just reach out to us. Thanks so much.
I took French. My Spanish is very limited.
Well, yeah, don't worry about that, it's all English language learning, and, and also, in the past, we have, we. We have used your one thousand dollar gift every single year to fund those five or six students with. With curriculum materials, because there's a hundred, everything is free to our students and tutors, so. If you train a tutor and it costs a hundred dollars and you have curriculum for a student, it costs a hundred dollars, so, so that's how we've used your funds. Thanks very much, enjoy your evening.
Great to know, thanks Lynn.
Thank you.
Going to shuffle the chairs again and we'll bring Jane McLaren up. For chore service. Hi, one second, and I will. Bring you. Add you as spotlight. Hi Jane.
Hello, thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming, we appreciate it on the, you know, fairly short notice and. Sort of middle of the afternoon. So you've, you've requested a fifty percent increase from us, which equates to. Another twenty-five hundred dollars. And again, just gonna, would love to give you the floor to. Give us some information, Kent-specific information, you're a, you know. You cover a big region of our neck of the woods. But if you would like to sort of focus on Kent, that would be great.
Sure, okay. Um, so chore has been around for thirty-one years, according to thirty-one years of helping seniors and elderly remain at home. We have seen an increase in all across our towns of elderly that don't have family to help support them and people that cannot afford for, to pay for services. We have found it through COVID that we have had to raise wages, worker wages for a second year in a row to attract and retain people. To work in, to do the essential services that we need. And in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, we were able to bring our hours up in Kent a little bit, like sort of getting closer to pre-COVID hours that we supplied, supplied to clients. Before COVID, we were eight hundred and thirty-three hours. Then we dipped down to five hundred hours in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one at four hundred hours, and then last fiscal year, we topped out at six hundred and fifty-eight hours. So we're slowly working to get back up to pre-COVID numbers. And clients, we were able to serve twenty-one clients last year in Kent, and that was up from thirteen the year before. We did have six workers that worked in Kent, even though one was a resident, and they earned sixty-six hundred dollars. But we did have six actual workers coming from different towns to provide services. So we had to raise the wages from fifteen dollars an hour to sixteen fifty per hour for indoor work. And outdoor, we had to raise it from sixteen dollars an hour to eighteen dollars an hour, so that's a big hit for us. And I think what we saw through the pandemic was that everybody was struggling. The, the hourly wage people really had a tough time making go of it, and we wanted to make sure that we provided a competitive wage for them. It's not really a livable wage, but it's a competitive wage. Compared to other agencies doing the same type of work, and in some cases, we pay a little bit more. But without the chore workers, we don't have a chore, we're not able to do those services. So. Our hope is to, we're asking all towns to increase funding and we're. Kent has been extremely generous to, generous to us in the past, and we did receive ARPA money from Kent, which we're very grateful for. But we will use the extra money to help pay for the workers, make sure the workers have. Were able to get out to clients and the contribution, our contribution has dropped. Across all seven towns, it was six dollars and eighty-six cents last year, last fiscal year. And Kent in particular, they were at five dollars and fifty cents per hour for our service, for six hundred and fifty-eight hours of service, so they were a little bit below the average. And. Our actual cost of service is closer to forty dollars an hour. So it is a little bit below the cost of service. We're also paying more for our workers to get to clients, the cost of gas. We have workers driving from, if we have a need up in, you know, somebody who lives in. Canaan and they need to get to Kent, and they agree to take on that client, we do pay them mileage to get there when we can. It's more important for us to get clients, get the service that they need, and we have been footing the bill for the mileage that does not get passed on to the client, it doesn't get covered under our grant. We're still following CDC guidelines for PPE and staffing, treating and gloves and safety protocols. And we are working with a consultant to do some planning for the next three years, our hope is to expand our services. We've been working with the community to find out where the gaps are in service, where we can improve and where we can collaborate with other agencies and community services. So we hope to be expanding and collaborating a little bit more in the next few years. So with that, it's our hope that, oh, in. One other additional note, in Kent, we did provide seventy hours of service last fiscal year to a. Connecticut home care client, that's a state program that's not funded under our grant, but we, the client needed services, so we provided that and it comes out of our fundraising expense. So we did provide seventy hours of service to that client, and we do do that on occasion when it's difficult for. People to get someone to come out to this area at times. A lot of the state agencies have someone that will come from Rocky Hill or something, and they just don't make that community, they don't commit to it, so we do when we can. Provide services to people that are underage that need our services, even though it's not covered in our grant, or people on the state home care program.
Thanks so much, so have you been seeing the, the similar trend where we've been seeing? You know, we read about it, I read it about it every day from, as far as workforce. Are you having difficulty retaining or recruiting workers?
We've lost several people through COVID. We are just now actually hiring, we just hired three new people, we started using Indeed. We've gotten a lot of hits on that, so we just got three people, one in Amenia, and she's able to get to the. Uh we've gotten a lot of hits on that. So we just got three people, one in um Armenia and she's able to get to the Kent area. Um so we're very excited about that. She gets back to Kent and the Sharon towns. Um so we're seeing an increase in that. I think people are realizing they need to come back to work. Um and so we're happy about that. Um and so we're working on. Um, you know, keep it, keep going with that to increase, but we're doing it slowly but surely.
Thanks. Rufus, um Glenn, any? Questions?
I've got one question. So uh in the notes and you, and you said, so twenty-one Kent residents are served. Has that um? Has that stayed about constant through the years? Do you anticipate that going up or down uh moving forward?
Um, we, we, we hope that it goes up. It's up from last year. We're up from thirteen clients last year. Um twenty-two the year before, twenty-seven the year before, and that was pre-COVID. So they're going in the right direction. Um and you know, and again, we've been very thankful to Kent over the years. They've been very supportive. Um you know, we have been at the same, you know, funding the five thousand dollars since twenty sixteen. So then we are asking um all the towns. That haven't increased the funding in a few years to do so.
Okay, thank you.
And Jane, and I, I probably should have asked this of the other um. Other folks, do you apply for um other grants? Whether it's like state, you know, regional, like the Western Connecticut um area on aging or state funding. Or um federal funding.
We, we do, we have our federal grant and then we do um grants through the Northwest Community Foundation of Berkshire. And then we just got a grant from the Cornell Foundation and I just applied for one through the Canaan Foundation as well, too.
And what's the federal funding that you get? Is it a?
That's the Western Connecticut Area Agency.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. They are, um I just attended a meeting with them the other day and they're expecting, um they've been pretty consistent through the years. But they're expecting to be taking a hit for FY twenty-four. So I'm not sure if that's going to do to our funding as well either.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Rufus, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there.
All your workers are paid or do you have any volunteers?
We don't have, we have, um, no, we don't really have an active volunteer program. That's one thing that we're looking at as part of our planning process. Is how to get sort of a robust volunteer program in place. Um and all of our workers are paid a flat hourly rate, no matter what the client could change back. There's some clients that can't contribute anything, but we pay them. It's sixteen fifty or the eighteen, no matter what the client contribution is. But volunteers will be coming, we're working on that.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn, anything further?
Nope, that's all I have.
Jane, thanks. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Absolutely.
Yep.
So next on deck, we'll go with um Husatonic Youth Services Bureau. And I saw her. Yeah. There you are.
There I am.
Alrighty. Hi, Kelly.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to come chat with you today.
Absolutely. So again, same sort of rhythm. Um. We understand that you're a regional organization and um looking to really talk to the specific. Kent work that you do and I think I see you all are asking for um an additional three thousand dollars. Or a little um under forty-three percent increase of overall over last year. The floor is yours.
Um so for anyone that doesn't know, the Husatonic Youth Service Bureau provides um three main services to the town of Kent. And uh all of region one, actually. Um our primary focus is clinical mental health counseling for young people. Um we also do case management services for those folks. Um we run a juvenile review board, which is a diversion program for first-time youthful offenders. To avoid sending them to juvenile justice programs. Um and then we have um what we call enrichment programs. Um so those come in the form of social skills groups for young people. Autism Spectrum Disorder Support Groups. Um we ran a program last year called Summer Series. Um we basically ran. A summer program at the conclusion of the Park and Rec programs to fill a gap in childcare needs um at the end of the summer. Um but the primary request that I'm asking for today would support the clinical mental health services part of our work. Um in the past years, the town of Kent, um in twenty twenty, we provided support to nine students with mental health services. Um in twenty twenty-one, that went up to eleven. In twenty twenty-two, we jumped from eleven to nineteen. Um and so far this year, we have seen sixteen students in the town of Kent. Um and we anticipate that we will exceed the nineteen that we saw from last year. Um so basically, we are looking for an increase to help support um our increased cost to provide those services to students. Um it costs us, um well, we estimate the cost of our services to you, the service we provide. At about fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars a year. That's the value of our service. Um each student that we see, we see for a minimum of ten sessions. Um. That's our minimum. Um we often see students for much longer than that. That's, so it's one session a week for ten weeks. Um but we have seen students in Kent particularly for upwards of two years, some of them. Um so it's a pretty conservative number um with that fourteen to fifty. Um. So what we are asking for is an additional three thousand dollars. So to get that, sort of the mathematical end of that. Um I divided the seven thousand dollar allocation that you have previously generally generously supported us with. Um by the nineteen students that we saw last year. Um so per pupil, that gives us about three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Um which if you multiply that by the eight additional students we saw last year, comes just shy of three thousand. Um I rounded up, of course. Um but that's where we get that three thousand from. Um we truly are seeing a lot of increase in needs for students' mental health. I think across the, the globe, they're seeing increased needs for mental health, but we are seeing it here locally as well. Um and we anticipate that that will grow as more folks become familiar with mental health services and the benefits. Um we are also increasing our. Um sort of just uh participation in Kent activities as a whole. We've done a lot of partnering with Park and Rec lately. Um we went to the summer carnival with the library. Um we would like to start bringing some more of those enrichment and prevention programs. To the town as well. Um so our engagement in Kent is increasing, but so are the number of referrals that we are getting for students.
And do you see a um, an age range? Is it a lower age range or is it? Um. Or is it all over the board or is it the higher age range?
Um all of the students that we are currently seeing are at Kent Center. They're none at Hoozie. Um. But uh unfortunately, um the most increase in the requests for services are students um between three and eight years old. So specifically K through third grade um are the, the more significant requests. That's where a lot of the requests are coming from now.
Okay. And I know just from um going to the coalition meetings, you're also. Y'all are heavily involved with the Northwest Corner Prevention Network. Um and it is great to see the increased sort of um partnership with. With Park and Rec, with uh, you know, and all the other um organizations. I see you all more than I have in the past, which is great.
We recognize the importance of those relationship-building opportunities and comfort levels with parents. So trying to establish that rapport through sort of less frightening circumstances. Um I think has been really helpful for us because parents know that we're here. We are, we used to get a lot more referrals from the schools and not as many from parents. But we're getting more from parents now, which uh I, I think is a catch twenty-two. Um you know, we'd love to not need referrals. We'd love for everyone to be okay. Um but it is nice to know that parents feel comfortable and equipped to reach out to us on their own.
That's, that's really interesting, because you would think that it would mostly be coming. Through the school system, but um. Yeah, that'll be interesting to really look at trends in another three or four years. And we know that a lot of this is secondary to COVID and. You know, all the difficulties that every family has had to, you know, walk through.
Absolutely.
Um Rufus Glenn?
Kelly, um if a parent, you know, are, do you get contributions from, from the families too? I mean, it's not required, right? But.
It's not required. Um a lot of the fam- some of the families choose to contribute separately. Um but we don't, all of our programs and services are free. Um we have started instituting a fee for service. Um for some of our like enrichment programs, like the summer programming, um or programs we call pop-up programs. Um that are more like childcare-based. Um but the, the mental health services are all free. Um we choose not to charge for them because we don't want to preclude anyone from participating. Um and if we got into the, the business of accepting insurance, um I think it would be probably more negative than positive. Um and would also probably cost us more money initially, because we don't really have the administrative capacity to, to take something like that on.
Yeah. And um just to ask, because I started asking, do you um, do you receive any other? Do you receive any state grant funding or federal grant funding? Do you, I assume you're always looking for those opportunities?
Yes, we receive both. Um so about three hundred and fifty thousand or so of our operating budget comes from grants. Um we have a federal grant that supports the Northwest Corner Prevention Network. We're the fiduciary for that. Um we get a state grant. Um we get funding from each of the towns. Um and actually, the state grant requires us to have a matching gift from each town in order to be fully eligible for the full state grant.
That's good to know.
Yeah. Um and then the rest of our grants are, are local private foundation type things. But yes, always in pursuit of grant.
Yeah.
I think we have to be. At this point, we couldn't afford to not be.
Right. Great, thank you.
Kelly, thank you. I've got one question. Um so, so you came up with the three thousand dollars. Uh so um uh with, with eight students. And you said that, that roughly three hundred and sixty-eight dollars per student. Um so, and you said this is a minimum of ten sessions. Uh how long is a session? And is that, is that, is ten session per year?
So we, that's our guideline. So we like to try to shoot for a ten-session model. So that gives us a few sessions to build a rapport. A few sessions to actually try to organize some treatment and then a discharge. Um but it's not a hard number. So if a student needs more care than that, um we certainly don't turn them away. Um we try, if it's a more significant case, to make a referral to a longer-term care provider if we can. Um but that doesn't always work, particularly in the Northwest Corner. Um there are not a lot of other pediatric mental health providers. Um and certainly none of them are free. Um so we don't turn them away. The ten-session model is, is a rough. Attempt to give us some sort of structure um and set expectations.
Okay. So unless my math is off, so a, a session is roughly thirty-six dollars is what, is what our, our funding is helping you with.
Yes, that's what your contribution is, is covering. For us, it's, it's seventy-five dollars for that. Mm-hmm. But I based it on your previous contribution to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything, Rufus? Great. Kelly, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you know, don't feel pressured to stay on. Everybody's very busy, um but appreciate the time.
Likewise. Thank you very much.
Right. I think I saw Sandy there.
Yep.
Hi, Sandy.
Hi.
Shuffle them before I shuffled the wrong person. Um how are you?
Good. Thank you so much. And this is, you know what? Having to kind of just wait while others do is just very inspiring to me. Incredible work people are doing. It's just, it's just almost heartbreaking for me to listen to, but anyway.
Yeah, and reading, you know, reading a letter in a folder is, it gives you a certain amount of information. But I think this um, this process is giving us, certainly giving me a lot more information and um really. Sort of understanding the fabric of the, you know, what all of you all provide. So I will. I'm going to turn the floor over to you to talk, obviously, your Kent Memorial Library. So you don't necessarily um. Reach out to the region, but I know that you have a lot of, all of the services that you provide do reach out beyond our physical border. So I'm gonna put myself on mute.
Okay, Sarah, how about you and I split this? I'll start and I'll hand the baton over to you. Yeah, we, you know, yes, of course, we're focused on Kent. But um whether it's our book sale that brings people in from all over, which is a fundraising event, but also Sarah's programs. Some of the baby programs and uh they attract people from other towns who know that Kent is a place to come to. Uh maybe a town, not to insult Warren, but it's a small town and uh you know, that they can come in and have these great programs. So um, so yes, we are asking um for uh an eight percent increase. So that our total grant would be a hundred thirty-five thousand. Of course, we're grateful for all the money and, and annual grants. But it is only at most thirty percent of our budget. And that's where, you know, whether it's the car raffle, the book sale, the quiz sale. I mean, the, you know, everything from cupcakes to whatever, we're constantly trying to raise money from the community. And so, and we do rely. You know, you've been asking people about volunteers. We rely on like, Sarah, what do you think about a thousand or more at volunteer hours? Um it's just an incredible amount of people who keep our library running.
It's, it's near to six.
Six thousand, okay.
Thousand volunteer hours per year. Um so I mean, if you just try to think about what that would cost. To pay people to do this kind of work. It's, it's impossible. So um now, mind you, our volunteers. Also volunteer because of the communities that they join by being a volunteer. So our book sale people love. To volunteer at the book sale and they look forward to their Friday afternoons when that's their day at the cashier and they, they, they. They happily come into the firehouse to see what's arrived during the week so that they can sort it and get excited about things that they find. So it's a win-win as far as we're concerned to have so many people volunteering and, and bringing their um. Time to the library because that community spirit is also what we're trying to do. You know, we have. We have a variety of um mission types of things and, and one of them is to create community. And the volunteers are a real, a real core of what we do. Um we, we rely on them and they enjoy pitching in. So it is uh with, we have the book sale, we have the car raffle, we have the benefit. As uh our three major fundraisers in addition to our annual membership campaign, which is a direct solicitation via mail. And, and social media and such. And then um we do get, you know, random people who just walk in and love libraries. And like to put some money in the jar, which is great. But we uh rely on the support of the taxpayers. For literally as, as much support as, as you can manage, because it is very, very challenging to manage. And run all these fundraisers every year. We have an aging population of volunteers. So every year we have to. Bring on a few more and, and, and reorganize and such. So.
Sarah.
The other thing that has happened, oh, yes.
Did you also, you know, in terms of the increase, talk about staffing, which I know Jean has asked about other organizations about the difficulties of, of paying. Especially when we have a new hire, because somebody has left or has a full-time opportunity when we're only offering, other than Sarah, everybody is part-time. Some more so than others. But you know, when we have to pay, find somebody new and pay them hourly. And we were only paying like fifteen dollars an hour or seventeen, it was tough. And we'd had to raise some of our salaries to get anybody. Sarah, you want to talk to that?
Yes, yes. So that's actually what's happened. Most of our expenses have been pretty steady for the last few years. We spend about the same on our programs and our books and such. But our um line item for part-time staff has really risen dramatically. And that's because we could not, we were doing everything we could to attract staff when we needed to replace people. You know, we lost a few from COVID, we lost a few just from retirement. And you just, you couldn't find staff to come in at those rates. So we needed to raise our rates and make them more attractive. And we are, you know, currently certainly on our programming staff, fully staffed and it's uh going very smoothly right now. Um and it's, I, I think it's across all industries where the hiring costs have just gone up tremendously. So that's really what the increase in our budget is um the, the biggest piece. I mean, obviously, everybody has higher expenses. For things like fuel, oil and, and et cetera, but it's.
Health insurance. Yeah.
Insurance.
Right. Thanks.
But you, I mean, we're happy to talk and brag about all the great stuff we do. If you want to hear it, it's, it's a, a litany every week. Um we are, we are always very proud to um. Reach out to every person in Kent that we can and try to provide a service that will connect them to the community and strengthen. You know, there's just, just improve their lives. That's, it's, it's across the board, entertainment and enrichment and um community. You know, there's just, just improve their lives. That's, it's, it's across the board entertainment and enrichment and, um, community and all those great things.
And collaborate with other, yeah. And collaborate with other, you know, literacy on the, uh, which, you know, I mentioned as we were all waiting on Zoom. It's, I think, going to be part of our strategic plan, uh, which we're meeting on tomorrow, Friday. Uh, to see what we can do to increase that and bilingual programs, um, that's going to be probably part of our mission. But we love to collaborate with other nonprofits in town.
So I'm.
The chamber meeting this past week. Go ahead.
No, go, you go ahead. I'm gonna go on screen share in a second, but go ahead with, finish your thought.
I was just gonna mention, we were, we had, uh, we attended a chamber meeting last week and again, there were multiple requests for us to be doing more things as a library. Well, and people would just say, well, can't the library help? And generally, we say, yes, we can help. So, um, as much as we do for our own mission and patrons, uh, we do work hard to, um, work with all the other nonprofits and organizations in town.
So, um, thanks for that. I am always a big fan of a nice pie chart. So can everybody see my screen that I've shared, hopefully?
Yep.
Um, and I, I really, this is really, um, you know, an opportunity that I think is worth, um, spending a minute on. Um, looking at the numbers where you rank with the other, um, libraries. And I was, I mean, I, I, what you all have done during the pandemic and, and continuing and, and even upping the ante during the pandemic has been remarkable. And this is great to see, um, that number one in juvenile and, uh, youth program attendance per capita. I thought that was, wow, number one of all the libraries. Um, so it's, do you want to take, you know, thirty, forty-five seconds and just sort of speak to this, um, this handout that we have?
Sure.
Yeah, and Sarah, add the latest stat too on volunteers, which came in after, didn't it?
Yeah, that's right. That didn't, I don't think that had the volume. That, I didn't add that to this particular, um, sheet. So yes, number one in juvenile and young adult program attendance per capita. You know, we're a small town. So when we get busy programs and, and again, we've talked about, we do draw from a lot of other towns. Um, the, the closing of the New Milford Library has been fortuitous for our little library because we get all of those people coming in, um, and they love us. I don't think we're gonna lose them just because New Milford will be opening back up soon. Um, we have a lot of computer users, number two in the state, again, per capita. Um, and library visits, that's a, that's a slightly more amorphous number, but we have a very steady stream of people coming in all day. But the number that's, of course, jarring is down at the bottom where you see we've achieved all these things. And still we are number one hundred and sixty out of one hundred and sixty-five in all the libraries of the state of how much money we receive from municipal sources. So unlike the, the, the few libraries that are below us, you know, one sixty through one sixty-five, they, most of those, those, those four libraries, they get their, excuse me, five libraries. They are not well-funded by their towns because they are all very well endowed with, uh, fun. So they get, uh, a lot of their income, they get the majority of their income from their own investments. Um, they are libraries from towns that had, um, early sponsorship. So you know, the Hotchkiss Library, for example, is sponsored by the Hotchkiss family. You know, the Kent Memorial Library was built with bake sales and rummage sales, you know, a hundred years ago. So we, we are working on the endowment, but it's not quite near where it can support us fully at this point. Um, it, it, we hope someday, but until that time, we rely on the town to help us. Uh, because otherwise it's just book sales and bake sales and all those things.
And do you find, um, in comparison to some of the other folks who've spoken today that, um, libraries don't see as much sort of state and federal funding opportunities?
Um, you know, we did lose, we did lose some state funding. Um, I will say that the state was great during COVID. They, you know, they, they pushed out money to us in ways that was incredibly helpful. So, um, there's almost zero federal money. Um, there, we are going to be applying for a, a significant state grant.
For construction.
For a construction, but that's, you know, that's still, that's down the road. And of course, that's very much earmarked. It's not for.
Right.
The lights on.
Generating.
The town money is about keeping the lights on, is literally about being able to function at all. Any money we would get from federal sources or from state sources is going to be specifically earmarked for some sort of improvement. So, yeah, there, there's no, there's no operational support from those sources.
We have occasionally applied where we think we're eligible for Northwest Connecticut Community Foundation, which has been generous. They, you know, talk about capacity building. It sounds like, like a bureaucraties, but I just want to say like, you know, they gave us like ten thousand dollars four years ago to help with fundraising consultant. And look where we are today. I mean, that ten thousand dollars helped us get, get some professional advice that we needed to launch a major campaign if we're lucky enough. So we couldn't have done it without them.
Yeah, that's such an important part of their mission, offering those exact, and it is totally bureaucratic speak, capacity building, but for, you know, you all for, I've been involved with a couple of, um, the grants that in other spheres, um, where we were able to rewrite bylaws for a non-for-profit that I was volunteering with. We never would have been able to afford to do that. And the bylaws were like thirty years old and would never have been able to happen without, um, without that capacity building funding from them. Yeah.
Yeah.
We're very lucky. Um, I don't have any other, I don't have any questions. Oh, I have one question. How is, um, how is the sort of capital campaign, the, the, the big project?
You know what? It is starting this week, basically.
Oh, that's exciting.
It is. Um, at a certain point, when, you know, actually, you know, we would like to meet with, uh, you individually first probably. And then, uh, you know, Rufus and Doris Glenn, uh, to kind of just give you an overview so that you don't have to like rely on scuttlebutt. Um, so.
That'd be great.
I mean, just so you know, we thought we were going to start the capital campaign last June. But there was a lot of stock market volatility and fears of recession and we just put a stop on to it for six, seven months. So gave us more time to prepare, but like, I'm telling you, it's this, it's like starting this week.
So my timing was right. And I didn't even know, this wasn't, I, this wasn't.
Yes, and we're starting, just so you know, we're starting with our board, with our, our capital campaign fundraising. We actually are not going out to the public for a while until we have a significant amount. And we're trying to avoid doing that until we're ready to say, you know, we've raised a lot of money. And that Sarah and I are probably going to spend like every waking hour on the stupid state construction grant, but it's, you know, it's a potentially a million dollars, although it could, it could increase our construction costs. Um, twenty, twenty percent by, uh, prevailing wage requirements and ten percent of the overall project cost. So even if we could get a million, then we might, we might only net out five hundred thousand, yeah.
There's a bill that talks about prevailing wages for municipalities. I will find it in my bill tracking and send it to you.
Thank you. I mean, we're not the only library who has dealt with this and some libraries have applied, gotten the grant and turned it down. If they were able to raise it privately and some libraries had no choice. We don't know which one, which type of library we're gonna be. So we are.
Out, yeah.
But that is why we will apply. If we think we can get a million dollars, no matter what we net, we'll, we'll take it. If we need it.
Great. Rufus Glenn? Any questions or?
I've got one question. Um, so, so sixty-five percent of your budget is, uh, is fundraising. So, uh, so that's, that's a rather large number, uh, with, uh, the book sale, car raffle, quiz night and all that. Is there any kind of trend line with that? I mean, in the last few years, is that about what you've raised a, a, on the whole? Or is it going up? Has it gone down?
Well, Sarah, you want to talk about membership?
Yeah.
Membership versus events?
Right.
That's a trend.
Um, so it's generally been somewhere between, we raise two-thirds to three-quarters of our budget every year. So, and it's, there's, there's multiple revenue streams. Um, there's the membership which brings in, you know, they, they, they tend to bring in the certain percentages. I will say, membership has been increasing, which has been lovely to see. Um, that is, um, has been, you know, we were again told by our wonderful fundraising, uh, consultant, you know, the best way to raise money is to ask for it. So we make great effort to ask for it. Um, but yeah, it's pretty steady. It's pretty steady. And it's almost interesting to see as our library has grown a lot in the last twenty-five years in its staffing and in, um, capacity, program capacity. So as we've grown and our budget has grown, our fundraising has almost completely parallel with the way that our organization has grown, the fundraising has grown just right along, right along with it. So that, with the ratios are pretty much the same.
And of that, um, the three hundred and three thousand, and you, I'm just a rough percentage. Um, what of that is through your annual letter?
Um, uh, the, probably about a third, a little bit less, under a third.
Okay, used to be, used to be less, but now it's more.
Yeah.
And because used cards are costing us so much more, we have to do more in membership in order to net out the profit.
Well, it's the same thing. Yeah, the book sale used to be smaller before we had the firehouse. And then we took over the firehouse space and it could grow and it could grow. And now it's so big that we have to hire staff. So it's quite big, but we're no longer, it's no longer fully.
Problem.
Right. So it, it, it all just tumbles into itself.
Yeah. And if, I, I know in past years you've, um, one of the data points that you included was the number of people who came into the library and it was astonishing. It was like in the tens of thousands, like forty, was it forty thousand? It was so ridiculous.
I think we're still in the COVID recovery time. I think this past year it was more like twenty-eight thousand.
That's still astonishing.
One year we had, it was like forty-six thousand. Yeah, it's not.
So what I wonder, and this is just a curiosity, I wonder how many people who live in Kent, um, have a library? I bet it's an enormous amount.
Well, we have, right now, we have about a thousand active library cards.
Well, I appreciate all the data and the background of the big project and all the other projects you have going.
So, um, we'll be in touch more and maybe when you're done with budgeting season. Maybe you're never done. I don't know, but maybe March is a good time for you.
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, we are going to shuffle the deck chairs, I believe, one more time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again. I know there was a fire call. Um, do we have, Eric, are you here on behalf of the fire department? Matt, are you here on behalf of the fire department?
Hello, Jean, it's John.
Oh, there you are. Sorry, apologies. A lot of, uh, a lot of folks. Thanks, there you are. So, um, bring, thanks, John, for coming. Um, so just to keep the same sort of rhythm, we know, we see that the fire department is asking for a little over nineteen percent increase in their annual ask, which equates to twenty thousand five hundred dollars. Um, and I'll, uh, turn the floor over to you to sort of, um, bring us up to speed and fill in the gaps.
Sure, sure. Uh, we, I saw it as a little more like a twenty thousand dollar grant increase from our, our previous requests. Um, but in twenty twenty, our grant, uh, amount was eighty-five thousand five hundred. And we did increase that twenty thousand, uh, dollars, which was about twenty-three percent. And then we were able to hold that new budget, uh, grant amount of a hundred and six thousand, uh, for, uh, twenty-one and twenty-two through the pandemic. Uh, and a number of factors have kind of prompted this increased request to a hundred and twenty-six, five. Keep in mind that, that our, our grant was always, uh, for the previous two years was, uh, I believe, at just a hundred and six thousand. Uh, and that we, especially last year, I think we kind of offered a, a number of, of suggestions that, that we were gonna have a tough time staying at a hundred and six thousand, uh, moving forward. Um, at the moment, we were, uh, work, still working on approving our budget. Uh, it was a priority though to, to get our requests into you on time. And so we have submitted our, our grant request and our funding request for EMS. Um, and then, uh, we've got Eric Epstein here who just signed on as treasurer about two weeks ago. So some of the factors that, that are affecting us, uh, certainly is going to be electricity. And I just, uh, to, to rattle off a couple of numbers to you, in, in twenty-one, our electric bill for the year was about ten thousand dollars. Uh, twenty-two, our electric bill was eighteen thousand dollars. And, uh, after reviewing the, the draft budget a little more with, uh, Eric last night, I was cautioned about the number that I had put in, in his absence and, and he said, uh, we need to anticipate a thirty thousand dollar electric bill for twenty-three. Um, that right there is, is a, you know, a, a twenty thousand dollar increase from twenty-twenty-one. Other factors include the, uh, our need for a safety consultant as OSHA. Um, and other kind of requirements of the department increase. Uh, and our ability as volunteers to stay caught up with those requirements becomes more challenging. We've tied, uh, signed on with a guy who's going to help us with several facets of, of state and federal, uh, safety requirements. So that's gonna put us in a much better place safety-wise, but this is a consultant that we're, we're gonna need to fund this year. Another factor is our data collection system that we were warned, uh, sometime last year that, uh, we are gonna need to greatly expand our data collection system for emergency calls. And this was our, our, another government requirement. And we were notified that entities that do not, um, conform to this requirement are looking at a ten percent deduction to their Medicare, uh, payments for, for folks that we, uh, we bill for on ambulance transports. Well, that, that's something that looks like we can do, but we, we don't have the means, uh, to build that right now. We, we do have a line again on, on a consultant who is qualified to design something like that, get us set up for that and get us going, uh, to do that. But that is in, in addition to, to what, uh, expertise we already have available to us. Uh, our ambulance revenue, uh, in twenty twenty, we looked at, we were, we had about a a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue in twenty twenty-one. We look, we saw about a hundred and forty-five thousand come in. And for last year, we had a hu- about a hundred and thirty thousand come in. So, uh, a twenty thousand dollar drop in revenue there. Um, all I can say is, is that's the trend. Uh, we, you can try to make all sorts of, of predictions based on people getting out more, um, a, a population that's maybe more at risk, less at risk, needing more transports, being hospital-averse. Really tough to predict. Uh, and that feeds into a, a, an EMS, our EMS staffing request, which we can get to in a little bit if you want. It wasn't clear to me if this was just the operating grant request that you wanted us to elaborate on. We are also, um, we, we do feel that there are elements of, of capital expenses that we're still in a position to be able to cover, uh, again, with this grant increase factored in. We're looking at an eight thousand dollar bill for, to replace, uh, tires for our apparatus. Um, nine thousand dollars, uh, for, uh, safety, uh, sorry, nineteen thousand dollars to replace. The nine thousand is for our, to replace our keypad entry system. And about, uh, ten thousand dollars for security cameras, uh, and other security needs. Um, we also are working hard to secure a grant to fund the replacement of our firefighter PPE. That expense comes in at around fifty-three hundred dollars per firefighter. That expense comes in at around fifty three hundred dollars per firefighter. And a large portion of our firefighters' gear is going to expire this year, this coming year. And, and, uh, according to NFPA standards, that will need to be replaced irregardless of its condition. Um, communication systems, those are, uh, that's another area that we think we can, we can handle the expense of for purchases of new radios, uh, pagers. Uh, and then, uh, other items that we have not been able to fully fund yet through our budgeting system is, uh, additional AEDs. Um, but also we are, we are doing our best to amp up our revenues in other areas. Last year, the ball came back, uh, and that was a great fundraiser, very successful. Um, and the, uh, pancake breakfast, uh, is now started, uh, really gotten on its way and those numbers are increasing. And of course, we have a, a number of occasions where we offer a fee for services. So those, those are some of the opportunities and challenges we're facing here and I it, I think a, a twenty thousand dollar increase. Um, you, you know, is, doesn't really resolve some of, all of our financial challenges, but certainly helps understanding, having been through, listening through all these other organizations that really are remarkable, uh, missions there. Um, we understand that you're faced with many challenges as well and we've tried, done our best to take that into account. Now, again, uh, uh, this, this was a request that I, I had to make in, in, in absence of an approved budget over here. Um, but I, I hope that, uh, we can, we can have this happen. Now, I don't, um, you know, again, Eric has, has been a, in for a, a couple of weeks. Thank goodness, he's, he's joined the, the, um, the executive committee and I'll just give him an opportunity if he wants to chip in on anything.
Thanks, Sean. I, I'm on the job nine days, so still trying to get my, uh, feet wet here. So, uh, if you've got questions, we'll certainly, uh, do our best to answer them.
I have one question. This is Barbara Herbst. I'd like to know where the ARPA funding that you've been awarded is fitting into this narrative that you just shared? Because there was forty thousand dollars in the ARPA funding for next generation two-way emergency communication system. And there was also ten thousand dollars for the stair chair and additional AEDs and the stair chair has been purchased. And I believe there's almost seven thousand dollars left of that particular allocation for the AED. So where does that ARPA funding fit into that narrative that you just shared?
Certainly, yep. Uh, I was fortunate that we, we didn't have to shell out the money for a new stair chair, which we certainly needed. Um, and the, the ARPA funds are covering, uh, several AEDs. Um, but that does not, the ARPA funds do not cover all the AEDs that we need replaced. Uh, and the next gen, uh, two-way system, that, that's a new communication system that the state is rolling out slowly, uh, but surely, and the forty thousand dollars really is for us to, to begin, uh, work on the infrastructure for that. So it is not, that forty thousand dollars, I don't believe, was really intended for the purchase of radios or pagers or individual radio equipment.
Does that answer your question, Barbara?
Sorry. Um, I actually need to look back at the original documents to see, but the recommendation is forty thousand dollars for next generation two-way emergency communication system. So I don't know if the intent was to cover infrastructure upgrades or if it was for equipment. I would have to look back at the original documents.
Uh, I, I think you'll, you'll find that the for, um, more of an infrastructure expense.
Glenn Rufus, um, any questions or comments and do you want to, uh, have John and Eric, um, discuss the EMS staffing as well?
I just got one, uh, one question, uh, here and again, thanks, uh, thanks, thanks, John and Eric. Um, uh, just about the electricity, uh, so two years ago, the total electric bill was ten thousand dollars. So that was twenty two eighteen and this year you're anticipating thirty, um, so I'm, I'm assuming this is ever source, I think. Uh, and, um, and this is the, the rate increase that they're giving us. This is not any increased electric usage on your part. I would imagine that's about the same through the years. So this is, this is, this is directly out of our control.
And that's correct. And in fact, we, uh, a few years ago, pri- prior, or maybe twenty or earlier, we had, uh, high efficiency lights installed in our truck bays. Um, and we are in the process of now installing a new system of thermostats, which really relates more to propane expenses.
Okay. So, so, yeah, so this, I mean, you know, you're, you're in, your increased, uh, funding that you're asking for is twenty thousand five hundred and, uh, and just the electric alone would take twelve thousand of that, um, so, uh, so that's, that's quite a bit of jump. Do you anticipate, um, two thousand twenty four to be any, any higher, uh, you know, at, at this rate? Um, electricity is, uh, is, is kind of a problem over there.
Anyway, I, yeah, and for me to comment on, on the electricity projections, I, I, I would feel out of place to do. I would really like to think we've hit a spike and, and we're gonna get back to normal or at least level out, but I, I don't know. And Eric, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that since you kind of thought my, I was lowballing a little bit there on the uh, electricity.
I mean, we, 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 I think, done our best to, you know, get the best rate we could. We shopped around in the fall. Um, and we believe it's the, uh, the delivery charge. Um, an, an, another point that, um, went in bad, I guess, you know, several years ago, this was brought up last night, that we were part of the, uh, solar townwide, uh, you know, attempt to try and go solar. And I mean, that back roof of our firehouse is the perfect spot for an array of solar panels.
Yeah, I think you'll probably be hearing from Wendy Murphy very soon.
Okay, at, at the time, this was several years ago. Um, the, the company came in and said, oh, wow, absolutely, it looks, you know, like a, a, a good spot. And then they looked at our usage and said, absolutely not, we want nothing to do with it. So.
Yeah, a lot has changed in that program and Wendy Murphy is, um, through a sort of subcommittee with the Conservation Commission is looking at um, another round of that with, um, the um, Green, Connecticut Green Bank.
Mm-hmm. Great.
Okay, so yeah, so if, if, if you all think that the, this might level out or even, or even drop a little bit, that's, that's good news. Uh, but boy, if it can, if this trend line continues, uh, that's, that's, that's a big chunk just with electricity usage, um.
And John, I neglected to write it down. What were the numbers for electricity in those three years that you gave us?
I have in eighteen and thirty. Twenty, in twenty twenty one, ten thousand dollars. Twenty two, eighteen thousand. Twenty three, we project thirty thousand. So the solar company didn't want to do it because you used too much, so they wouldn't be getting any.
Too little because the building wasn't, wasn't occupied, uh, enough.
We weren't using enough electricity. It wasn't financially inviting for them.
And that may change substantially because there's now, um, supplemental staffing in there. And I imagine that twenty one number was still sort of residual. Um, less activity in the firehouse from the pandemic, I would.
Couldn't you feed into town garage and some, I mean, you've got several buildings in close proximity of each other that the town is responsible for.
Yeah, I, I don't know enough about it. Uh, sounds like Wendy's. I, John, I believe Wendy's been involved, right?
Well, um, I did notice, we, we had a, a slight incident recently where a person, uh, added themselves to our electricity account. Um, and we didn't recognize the name and that was very unsettling. And I think we, we recognize the name now. But we were not aware of it. Part of the mystery mu- behind that might be that the, our bill or our account reads Town of Kent Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, suggesting some sort of municipal, official municipal connection. But I, I, I can't comment beyond that, um. But, uh, just to, when Rufus made that remark, it, it made me think that, um, he may be on to something. Uh, it's, I understand that these delivery charges are really kind of raising eyebrows. And that solar, solar really could could make a difference.
Yeah. So, um, Rufus Glenn, do we want to also include, we're at four twenty three, um, I have to keep it to four thirty? Um, do we want to have them just talk to us about the, um, EMS supplemental staffing?
Uh, ye- yes, I mean, if, so you want to do this in seven minutes? This will be the last thing we do, we talk about?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Uh, if I could just jump in and, and say, uh, last year, we requested four hundred ninety two thousand five hundred, which was essentially, uh, EMS funding for, uh, the, the year. Um, it would, this was the, this was the membership speaking, uh, and that we really didn't think that, um, kind of guessing was an optimal way to go about this. And we recall a lot of the back and forth on this and it ended up that, uh, it was funded, uh, beneath even our best estimates of what our needs were gonna be last year. Um, and there, there was, uh, a good degree of discomfort by this idea that if we went over that amount, there was, we were gonna rely on some form of hope and statements about we'll find the money. Um, I, I think it's safe to say that, that the membership still feels the best scenario is the four hundred and nine, the funding EMS staffing for the year, realizing that does put a, a challenge for you guys, but it's the nature of the service that I, that I think, uh, we'd like you to consider and that, uh, I mean, this is and, and where the townspeople might fall on a matter like this. So anyway, I with the best estimates, we had submitted that, uh, amount of two hundred and thirty thousand. I mean, is there, is there anything you can offer to us in terms of, of your perspective on, on, or a response to this uh, difference that, that we have?
I guess one of the one piece of information that, um, would probably help is looking as seeing the year over year now that there's two years roughly of the paid staffing. Right? It's two years. Um, what does the trend look like? Does the trend, is it trending higher? Is it trending the same?
I'd have to look at what we ended up spending for, for EMS staffing in, in twenty two. Um, it, it's, uh, I probably could put you to s- sleep by, uh, rehashing all that you already know. How difficult it is to, to predict where we're gonna be. We have a a new member who signed on a, a little over a year ago and, and he's weeks or a month or two away from taking on his own shift after, uh, taking the course and, and several months of, of training, joining crews. We're ready to kind of, uh, give him his wings. He's gonna take up, uh, uh, he's gonna take a number of volunteer shifts, which, which is great. Last year, we had two folks retire. Um, we do our best to kind of anticipate who might retire this year. How, what are the chances we could bring on another EMT? So right now, we've got two, um, two applications, um, one application in and another one forthcoming after she gets the physical form filled out. Uh, both are interested in EMTs. Well, then you gotta factor in that, uh, a couple of years ago, we had someone join us, take the EMT course and really decide that this kind of, uh, vocation wasn't, wasn't for, for him or her and they, they backed out. Tough to argue with that. Um, it, but so it's, you know, a percentage don't always get online.
So, um, maybe in, so I, I'd like to pick this up at our meeting next Wednesday, which is a, we're due to start at two o'clock that day. Um, and just pick up this conversation, also give you all a week to um, get some of that information, get that, it would be great to see what the trend looked like year over year. Um, and like an executive summary, it doesn't have to be anything fancy, but like, uh, um, this was, this is how much we spent those two years. This is, these are the, this is how many retired, this is how many came in, this is sort of the net, net of, um, volunteers. And if you see any trends as far as, I mean, we all know what the workforce is looking like in general, um, any, any other pearls of wisdom that you might have to offer?
Okay. Yep, I know. So that Barbara's got the totals, total spent for EMS twenty one, twenty two. Twenty was what, half a year?
Yeah. That would be, that would be helpful, I think. And Glenn Rufus, anything else that you'd like to see from them next week?
I'm pretty good right where I, I have a feeling that situation is what it is.
Right.
I'm pretty confident with what they've done. Thank you, John and Eric.
Yeah, same with me. Thank you, thank you both. And, um, yeah, and anything, you know, what Jean said, year over year or something, you know, something to really dig our teeth into, but, um, but yeah, I've got a lot to say next time, but we just ran out of time.
But just, just to confirm, we're talking about two and a half years.
You know, yours.
Trend.
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Glenn, are you in a classroom right now?
No, I'm in my house. I know, I don't do these meetings in the classroom.
You don't want to talk to your students about government? Okay.
Well, I appreciate everybody's time, um, and we are at.
Wait a sec, before you go. Um, I need to say this now, it's about next week. Um, I'm gonna have a conflict with our regular meeting. Uh, it, it can't go beyond like five thirty. A four o'clock meeting next Wednesday.
Okay, then we have a hard stop.
Yeah.
We'll just have a hard stop.
Let you guys both know that now.
Appreciate it. That'll help in the agenda organization. I will listen to a, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
At four thirty one.
Thank you, folks.
All those in favor are one big motion of the day. Thanks, everybody, running downstairs to get on the hearing.